Welcome, everyone, to the 2022 Candidate Forum for Crow Wing County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for attending tonight or watching on Facebook. We do have, obviously, a different set of candidates and a few different people in the audience, so I'm going to go through the introduction and rules once again, so everyone's familiar. I'd like to welcome in our Facebook audience as well. My name is Pat -- Matt Gilian, excuse me, President of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, and I'm serving as moderator this evening. Tonight's forums are brought to you by the League of Women Voters, the Brainerd Dispatch, and the Brainerd Lakes Chamber, with support from the Brainerd Lakes Community Foundation and Bladech. We also thank the Crow Wing County Land Services Department for hosting us here this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to cover a few points. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking, so that everyone can hear. Also, please hold your applause until the forum has ended. We ask you to politely turn off your -- or silence your cellphone. No photography or recording will be allowed during the forum. Today's event is livestreamed on the Brainerd Lakes Chamber Facebook page and will be posted also. Recording will be posted on our website, brainerdlakechamber.com, after the conclusion of the forum. The views expressed at tonight's event are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. None of the organizers endorse candidates or political parties. Please refer to your programs for information on the races. You are welcome and encouraged to submit questions for the candidates, either on the question cards provided or by posting a comment on Facebook. If you have a completed question card that looks like this, please hold it up and one of our volunteers will get it back to the back table, and that's where there's screening questions for me. Please keep in mind that submitted questions are kept anonymous and must be addressed to all the candidates. Those that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to screen the questions and may rephrase or consolidate them. If you don't get a chance to ask your question or the answer is unclear, feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening statements, and then I will ask a series of prepared questions with up to one-minute responses. Candidates will then have 30 seconds to make a closing statement, and we will, as we did before, rotate the order for answering. Before we begin, let's give the candidates, the community sponsors, the event venue, and our volunteers a big round of applause.[163.34][163.34](APPLAUSE). All right, well, welcome, candidates. This is the time we'll ask for opening statements. You'll have one and a half minutes to respond, and we're going to start here on my immediate left with John Lubke.
Okay, thank you, Matt. My name's John Lubke. I live in Jenkins, Minnesota. I've lived in this county for 49 years. I've also -- my family's been raised here, and I continue to live here and own a home up in Jenkins. For 30 years, I ran a group of automotive parts stores in the city of Brainerd Lakes area. I ran them in a couple different counties around here. In 2003, I had the opportunity to -- blessed opportunity to retire fairly early from those stores, which gave me plenty of time to do the things I like to do. In the parts business, you serve people, and I've always loved to do that. So, in the community, I grew up, and I had the opportunity to run and be elected as the mayor for the city of Jenkins, which I have that title for the last 15 years. In doing that, I've also been able to join some other organizations I feel very passionate about. One of those is Habitat Humanity, where I've served on their board, and learned a lot about housing and the needs we have in this area for housing. The other one is the Region Five Economic Development Commission over in Staples. I've served on that -- whoops, I'm going to have to move fast. I've served on that one for quite a while. I'm going to skip over the One Watershed One Plan, which I've also served on, but I've also served on the League of Minnesota Cities, and I serve on their Board of Directors. The League of Minnesota Cities represents 837 cities in the state of Minnesota that teaches us about leadership and about good governance in small cities and small local governments. So, thank you. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Robin Sylvester.
Good evening, folks. I'm Robin Sylvester. I am so honored to be here with y'all tonight, and thank you for being -- taking some time out of your night to join us. I'm a 25-year state employee. Currently, I'm the Controller for MINDOT. We have a $4 billion budget, and I've had the pleasure to work with John on some of his activities right there in the city of Jenkins. Just like the Trunk Highway Fund, we have local funds, and we have county funds, municipal. Each one of you drive on a different road. Do you know what road you're driving on? Check it out. Look at your signs. It makes a difference that we educate our folks that we work together with, so that you know where your taxpayer dollars are going to, because those are our taxpayer dollars. You guys should have a voice in the roads that we build and the bridges that we repair. I've also worked for DHS right here in Brainerd a few years back. I worked for Department of Corrections. I've also worked at Camp Ripley with my husband when he was in the military. We worked -- started our career off there together. I've worked up at Migi State University, and I am proud to say I've had a small business, and currently, we have a partnership, a family partnership, that we all work together on. I'm honored to be here tonight, and thank you. I'm excited to hear the questions.
All right, thank you. Steve Barrows.
Good evening, everyone in the room. I want to also recognize the people that are with us online. I want to thank the individuals or the groups that are supporting this event tonight. I appreciate that very much. I'm the current Commissioner for District Three, which represents the southern half of Baxter and about 80% of Brainerd at this point. I was questioned at one point in the last couple of years, why doesn't Brainerd have their own Commissioner? And that's because it's all divided by population, and they all have to be relatively equal in size. But this year, North Brainerd was added to District Three. I'm excited about having those residents as part of the group that I'll be representing if I'm reelected. But I'm looking forward to this next opportunity, the four years. We've got -- we've done some wonderful things the past four years. I think that this is an opportunity to move this county forward and recognize and make us the place that Minnesota wants to come to. I look at it as bigger than that. I look at Crow Wing County as the central park for the central country, central part of the country. So, I'm excited about some of the initiatives that I have in my mind to move forward and make our county that attractive place that everybody wants to go to recreate, but also to live. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Tad Erickson.
All right, well, thank you very much. As many of you know, my name's Tad Erickson. I'm joined tonight by my lovely wife, Jaclyn, and my three beautiful kids. I've worked for the past 10-plus years as a transportation planner for a five-county area, and I've had the opportunity, in that capacity, to not only work with multiple county boards alongside and with those county boards, but also with -- working closely with the staff of those counties and at each constituent level and each constituent department within those counties. And it's really given me the opportunity to understand internally the different services that are provided by counties and the challenges that counties face, not only internally, but also from the external, how the counties have to comply with state statutes, how they interact with the cities within the county, the townships. I could go on and on, you know, businesses, nonprofits, trail groups, lake associations, but ultimately, the policies that the county sets, how they impact, how they affect, and how they benefit residents, taxpayers. And so, with my extensive background in local government and my current role, elected role, on the Brainerd City Council, I think that I have the skills, the capabilities, and ultimately, the judgment to be the next Crow Wing County Commissioner for District Three. So, thank you very much. I look forward to the questions to follow.
All right, thank you. Rosemary Francine.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Francine. I'd like to thank everyone for being here, for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and listen to us and ask questions and try to find out what we do well and what we don't do so well sometimes. My husband and I live in Baxter. We've been there for over 40 years. I have three sons, Michael, David, and Benjamin. They all live in Crow Wing County, so I'm a lifetime resident, and so is my family. My mom lives in the house that my dad built when I was six years old. It's over in northeast Brainerd, and she's still there. She's 99 years old. I worked for the school district for more than 30 years before I decided that I was going to run for county commissioner. And when I decided to run for county commissioner, I did quit my job at the school, because I thought, "I don't want to do two jobs poorly. I want to do one job well." I still am the ticket manager for the school district. I sell tickets for all the athletic events. I also try to find other people to sell tickets, so I'm one who's in charge of that. I was on the Baxter City Council for one term, and now, this is not part of my job as a commissioner, but I am the Board Chair for Northern Pines Mental Health Center. That's something I took on, because I think it's very important. My time's up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Troy Scheffler.
Thanks for all coming. Thanks for the hosts, and thanks for all you guys over there. I'm going to take a little turn from the standard here. I just sat through a couple of conversations between sheriff's candidates, and this is going to kind of express where I'm coming from and why I'm planning on being a commissioner. The amount of BS that I just heard from one of the candidates for sheriff is appalling. It's absolutely appalling. Sheriff Goddard talked about morale. Eric Clang exercised professionalism. People aren't electing me to not cut through the BS. I'm a populist candidate. Talked to thousands of people on the road outside here, and there's one thing that they're sick of, the status quo and the good old boys' club. The idea of this morale, that engagement survey that Mr. -- or Chief Clang showed, 50% of the jail is completely disengaged from their job. It's horrendous. They're hemorrhaging employees. A third of the deputies, same thing. The idea of Mr. Goddard taking credit for the Blade program, yeah, he didn't come up with that program, but he's going to take credit for it. In fact, the board, it's kind of funny that you would say that they're such good buddies, because they had a conversation of giving him a vote of no confidence, and that's where we're at with the good old boys' club. And hopefully, I can wrap up a few more things. And I got a Facebook page, and we'll discuss a lot of things on there. I know a lot of you are on there, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We're going to transition now from opening statements to the prepared questions, and this is the first one. This is directed first to Robin Sylvester, and then we'll move from left to right that way. Why are you running for county commissioner? And if you're elected, what will be your top priority? I'll read that again, and I'll remind you occasionally what the question is, but I may not read it every time. Why are you running for county commissioner? And if you're elected, what will be your top priority?
I'm running for county commissioner because my credentials, the experience I have working with our elected, state-elected officials, we have some opportunity to -- it's called an uncession. Let's get rid of the obsolete laws, the unnecessary laws, and let's simplify government. The second reason that I am running is I'm a fiscal person. I'm the -- I've been financed for 25 years. I have an opportunity to make change right here at home and help our programs shift into where we're headed. We are headed into an economic situation that who knows what our property taxes are going to be? Who knows how much it's going to cost for gas? People on fixed income are going to be struggling, if they're not already, and I'm here as a financial leader of the state, here to help lead teams and be a voice for we, the people. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve Barrows.
I've been serving the District Three population for almost eight years, first as a city councilman in Baxter, and now, the last three-plus years as a county commissioner for this area. In that time, in the last three years-plus that I've been a county commissioner, we've addressed a situation, two situations, financially that we had in the county. One was the reserves had been spent to pay our debt down, which is not a bad thing, except you don't have anything to fall back on when a pandemic hits. And the second thing is a cash flow problem, and both were very serious situations, and we resolved that. We have now reduced our levy by almost 70% over the course of these three years, and we've replenished our reserves. So, with that, I'm looking forward to the next opportunity to move the county forward financially, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The question again is, why are you running for county commissioner? And if you're elected, what will be your top priority? Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Matt. So, families, workers, seniors are getting hammered economically with high costs, high taxes, high housing prices. With what we've just come through with the pandemic after the past 24 months, you know, anybody on the margins, whether it was financially you're being pushed, whether it's pushed out of your home, out of a rental situation, if there's mental health. And so, I'm a fiscal conservative. We really need to provide some tax relief to people. They're not getting it anywhere else. This is an economic pressure cooker, and I don't see, with the type of government spending that's going on at the upper levels, I think we're just seeing the beginning of the inflation. So, we've got to provide some relief. The one way we can do that is through taxes. I think my mic just died. There we go. Being on the Brainerd City Council and serving the majority of the constituents in this district, I hear it every day when I'm door-knocking, and I want to be able to provide that relief to those families, workers, and seniors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Rosemarie.
Well, I'm running because I think that the people need someone who will be a watchdog for their money. I put in the time this job deserves, and I know how to ask the hard questions to make sure there's no frivolous spending. I believe elected officials must be accountable to the people, and I feel very strongly about this role. I guess I just, I've got the experience, and I feel very strongly that we need to -- oh, 30 seconds. That we need to make sure that we spend everyone's money wisely. We can't waste, because there is too much at stake right now.
All right, thank you. And again, the question, why are you running for county commissioner? And if elected, what will be your top priority? Troy Scheffler.
All right, my top priority is cutting this insanity that the board's been doing with grants. They've been taking grant after grant after grant. Ms. Francine just seconded a motion for a $340,000 grant to hire a couple social workers, two-year grant, to import a ton of people into Crow Wing County that are dependents. Well, what's that equating to? Well, that equates to significant grant dependence. We went from 20% grant dependence in 2014, and now, we're up to 35%. That's insanity. It's crazy. Where's that all going? It's starting to bleed off onto our property taxes. So, if anyone would be honest or actually looked at the budget here, they'd be able to explain that to you. And anyone I've door-knocked with, and you can look at my Facebook account, I did a 30-minute budget video on how they've been playing shell games and how they got through their little eight-year record levy, no increase. But yeah, social service spending went from 18% in 2014 and skyrocketed to 32%, because all those grants for all these dependents that the board has been importing are still here, and that's why the state mandates us at that point to take care of us.
All right, we're at time. Thank you. Last question again, why are you running for county commissioner? And if you're elected, what will be your top priority? John Lubke.
I'm running for county commissioner of Crow Wing County, because I believe it's one of the prettiest and best counties to raise children and live in. That's why I'm running. I think it's a beautiful place, and I love it here, and I'd like to do everything I can to be part of that and be part of the future of that. As a small city, as a business owner, I've done budgets, and as being the mayor of a small city of Jenkins, we've done budgets in a very, very small city. We're one of the smallest cities in this whole county, and we don't, we take our dollars very, 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 very serious. And we just did our budget last night, and we passed it, and everybody was happy about it on our council. We didn't have any problems with that. One of the things I look at in Crow Wing County, we have, all of us have a lot of different gifts, and if you look at something I worked on was broadband, and with the cooperation of multiple jurisdictions and the county, we were able to put a broadband package together for fiber to home for 1,972 people up in our neck of the woods, something I could have never done that alone, something I don't think the county could have all done it alone. But together, we can do those things together. I love it here. I want to stay here the rest of my life. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robin, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I opened it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nice try, Matt.[1185.33][1185.33](LAUGHTER).
Even the moderator gets lost from time to time. So, the next question here, then, will go to Steve Barrows. With the recent increase in property values, how would you propose setting future tax rates and balancing the county's budget? With the recent increase in property values, how would you propose setting future tax rates and balancing the county's budget?
First of all, those valuations are directed by the state of Minnesota. They're not directed by land services, where the tax forms come from, and everybody thinks that we have control over that. No, we don't. The state of Minnesota says we have to come in at a certain level, and if we don't, then they will step in and decide what that valuation is. In terms of setting, we have two things that impact the levy, and so, one of them is that we can control our spending. The other one is that for homeowners, we look at, to the state, to address the credit that we get for owning our homes, and currently, that's expired. We need to raise that amount with the new valuations. The $450,000 is the top number, where you can have the homestead credit in your tax forms. So, we need the state to do their job. We will do our job in terms of controlling the spending. We're down to 2.89% is what we're looking at to approve as our preliminary levy, and I'm very proud of that, coming down from 7.99% three years ago. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Tad.
All right, well, thank you very much. So, regarding the property values, you know, as has obviously been noted, property values are going up. There's a lot of different reasons for that. But one of the things I think we can do is, from an economic development standpoint, you know, I'm a firm believer in lower taxes broad-based, so if we can broaden that tax base out, we can bring those property values, those taxes down for everybody. And then, the other thing is just reducing spending and just watching costs as much as possible. Obviously, that's difficult in an inflationary cycle, but, you know, we've got to find different ways, innovative ways to do that. As was mentioned, you know, the different departments, the costs, the percentage breakdowns. You know, the county has a $100 million budget. 42% of that, or just over 42% of that, comes from the property taxes, and, you know, I think we have to find other ways to, you know, bring those taxes down and cut costs, particularly in the area of health and human services, even though that's an increasing need. And don't get me wrong, there's certain needs there as well, so.
All right, thank you. I'll repeat the question for Rosemarie. With the recent increase in property values, how would you propose setting future tax rates and balancing the county's budget?
Property values are part of what goes into your taxes, but what really makes your, sets your taxes is how much we spend. Our preliminary budget, we had our budget meeting on Thursday. Our preliminary budget is 2.89. That's pretty darn low. It's pretty good. We negotiate with unions, so there are going to be raises, and we have to account for that. We actually got a letter from the Department of Revenue after we set these new tax, or the new values, not new taxes, and they told us that we hadn't gone high enough. I was surprised at that. But, I mean, we need to control our spending, and we need to get grants. We have a $100 million budget, and 42 million of that is paid for by taxes. 58% of that is paid for by grants.
All right, thank you. Troy Scheffler.
Once again, a little pumped up on this answer. The valuation thing is kind of confusing. It's the cap at which people can get taxed on each house. Doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going to go up. What these people aren't telling you is that debt financing, in fact, Rosemarie put in her press release, she bragged about it, that we finagled the COVID funds and did a little shell game to pay down our debt financing. That was 15% of our tax levy. Well, that's not on the next levy. It's 15%. They're trying to masquerade that your taxes are only increasing a modest 3%. Well, where'd that 15% go? Your taxes are effectively going up 15, or, I mean, 18%, and that's where we're at. And this is the thing, that I'm so sick and tired of this obfuscation of what's going on. People need to know what's going on. I mean, there's a lot of mad, pissed-off people in this town, and I see them every day, because I've been door-knocking day till night, and there's tons of people that are going to be priced out, even in low-income housing, and the board doesn't give a damn.
All right, thank you. I'll repeat the question for John Lubke. With the recent increase in property values, how would you propose setting future tax rates and balancing the county's budget?
The property values in Crow Wing County have just jumped up. Part of it's because this is where people want to live, and it's a supply and demand. I have a real heck of a time in our little city of Jenkins, because even our little city of Jenkins, our property values went up immensely. We have to look at what do we actually need to keep the doors of the city of Jenkins open, and that's why we have to tax. The valuations are going to come up, and they're going to go down. We had the same thing happen in '82, or '80, when I was trying to buy a house, and the interest rate was 14 or 15%, and I was operating a business, and I had to borrow money at 12%. We also went through 2007, 2009, when you had houses out there that were short-saled. We had houses out there that were closed on. I think it's a little bit secular. I would hate to just put everything on and say, because right now, we happen to be on a high with the valuations of the property out there, that it's all going to be reflected back on taxes. I don't, I think it just look at what it takes to run the place, and that's what we should charge. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robin Sylvester.
I actually agree with John on this. It's important that we look at what do we need as a county? What are the services that we, the people, are expecting the county to deliver? We start there. A zero-based budgeting means you start with what do you need? What changes do you need to make? The economy's changing. It's growing substantially here in Crow Wing County. District Two is 57% of the revenue for this county, and actually, that's, I'm not sure of the growth rate on citizens moving there permanently, but it's exponential. It's huge. So, how do we balance the new permanent residency with the new revenue brought in on those taxes with holding the rest of us harmless, or at least stable, on what the county needs to collect from us? So, there's a balance. What are our needs? What are our increased revenue bases coming in? And how do we balance the books? I would be interested in a 0% levy, if we could live with it, but you've got to look at your business. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I just want to remind everyone that I have four more prepared questions, and we're going to transition into audience questions. So, if you'd like to get a question considered to be asked tonight, please raise your hand, and we'll get those to the back table and eventually up to me. And the same with the folks on Facebook. Please comment if you'd like to ask a question. Our third question will be directed to Tad Erickson first. In your opinion, were the 2020 elections conducted fairly? And what changes, if any, would you make in future county election procedures? So, I'm going to ask that question one more time. In your opinion, were the 2020 elections conducted fairly? And what changes, if any, would you make in future county election procedures?
All right, thank you, Matt. So, this one all depends on which election you're referring to. So, I think that throughout the nation, there were secretaries of states who exceeded their purview in changing the way votes were counted, the way votes were tallied, and then the manner in which the election was conducted. And that authority constitutionally is vested within state legislatures. And so, I do think that there was, secretaries of states exceeded their purview. Do I think that there was fraud here locally? I don't. And I think that, you know, regarding the machines, you know, I'm not technical enough to know whether the machines were hackable, but what we're told when asked is, they're not connected online. When pressed on that, okay, they're connected online, but they're not hackable. Then, when pressed on that, they say, well, they are hackable, but there's no evidence of fraud. So, my level of confidence in the machines is not there.
Okay. Thank you. Rosemarie.
I don't know how the elections are run anyplace but here, but I believe here, we have run a fair election. I do think there are things that we can do. We are required by the state to count two precincts. We are required by the state to count two precincts. We have already passed a resolution that we're going to count four precincts, so we're doubling that. And then there is something called cast vote, and we are going to turn that on so that, I guess that can tell the algorithms, and if there's anything that's happening in the machine that shouldn't be, or that the votes aren't being counted correctly. So we're doing something, and, you know, I want everybody to think that the elections are fair, as long as there are people out there who don't believe that this was done right. I want to work on it and make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that everybody feels confident.
All right, Troy Scheffler.
Well, a little loaded question, a little bit, but it's kind of nuanced at the same time. Personally, I think the second they started coming up with how this election was gonna be taken care of, that was when people should've went nuts and started screaming from the rooftops. Two years later, in retrospect, as far as Crow Wing County, since that's who I would be representing, I think we're pretty square in how the numbers panned out. However, I mean, being a populist candidate, if the people want paper ballots, and there's a referendum, or however they want it done, we get a poll, and that's how we'll do it. It's just that simple. But, it might cost more, it might cost less, it might be more efficient, it might not be efficient, but the people are the ones casting the votes, so the people are the ones that should decide how they want to cast their votes.
All right, thank you. I'll repeat the question for you, John. In your opinion, were the 2020 elections conducted fairly? And what changes, if any, would you make in future county election procedures?
I'll answer the second part first. Let's not go through another pandemic during a major election. I think that would really help. It would help the diversity, it would help the people, the conspiracy theories and stuff out there. As far as, I'm only to speak to Crow Wing County, because that's the only place I've ever voted, and I've been voting here for, well, I've been here for 49 years. I believe the Crow Wing County elections were done well. They have a history of doing it well, and they've continued to do it well. If there is other things that we should be looking at, I think it always should be double-checked and researched. You know, it's one thing to trust, but it's always validate, 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 and I think that's very important, and I think that should always be done. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Robin?
Yeah, this is a great question. This has been a topic on the news for a couple years. I think I cannot make an opinion of what happened, or if it was a fair 2020 election. I was not an election judge. I was not educated on our election laws. I appreciate Crow Wing County's leadership in bringing us along with what the laws today read, and where there are opportunities to close the gap on those laws. I'm very impressed with our Crow Wing County election folks, the volunteers and the administration. I do have questions, however, on the machines. When I do, and I'll compare it to getting my bank deposit ready for the business. If I have a million-dollar deposit that I'm gonna put together, I'm gonna put that information in my automated accounting system, and I'm gonna run a ledger. I'm gonna have a full tape, then I'm gonna take that deposit to the bank, and then I'm gonna ask the bank to give me my money back, or my receipt, and then reconcile that. That's all I would like to see, is if we have folks that want to see a reconciliation, how do we do that differently? So, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Barrows.
Thank you. My position is well-known on this particular matter. I feel that, first of all, according, listening to you, John, I agree that our responsibility is for Crow Wing County only. It is not for any other county, it's not for a national election. That is not our business. Our business as county commissioners is Crow Wing County. The fact is that we should always make sure that there's secure elections in our, in place for us, but we know that the accuracy with these machines is greater than when we manually count these ballots. We also know that there's a cost factor, and anybody that says there's not a cost factor is only fooling themselves. We're gonna pay every one of those judges to sit around and count them manually. There is a cost factor, and every one of you will pay for that. There are no facts in Crow Wing County proving that our elections here had any kind of fraudulent behavior taking place. We need to let the state officials around the country deal with this issue, and that is my official position on this particular matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to question four here, and this one is directed to Rosemary Francine first. What is your personal leadership style, and how would it serve you as a county commissioner?
Well, I have a different leadership style than many. We get our packets on Thursdays usually. I read that packet thoroughly. On Fridays and Mondays, I'm into the offices, asking questions, and I do a lot of research. I just, I don't trust that everything that we're told is true. I also, I listen, I build relationships, I make time to understand the local scene. I'm always approachable, and I follow through on what I say. I work well with others, and I think that when we work together, when we use our collective power, we can create a better world. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Troy Scheffler.
Well, I think as far as this get-together is shown, I like to speak plainly and clearly. When speaking of the truth, I guess sometimes it hurts, but I think the truth is top of the list on anything. Transparency is number one. I've always had an open cellphone policy for anyone at any times, at any hours, so if anyone would ever want to call me, I insist on it. Following the election, when I'm elected in November, I'll continue to do that, to where people can call me, and I will show up and talk to people and listen. I'm not gonna make promises to business owners and then do a 180 on them after they start investing into significant projects. When I make a promise to someone, I live up to it. In fact, I think ironically, as long as, well, a lot of the law enforcement is left right now, but that honesty has got me on a good relationship with them.
All right, thank you. John Lubke, what is your personal leadership style, and how would it serve you as a county commissioner?
Being in business for 30 years, having five parts stores, having 40 or 50 employees, managers, and also some minor partners, my leadership style has always been engaging. It's always been counseling. I've had employees that are smarter than me in certain areas, and I let them lead in those areas. There's certain areas I was very good at, and I would let in those areas. One of the things I learned of being an elected official, it isn't about the "I," you know, and when you own your business, it's about an "I." In an elected position, it's about the "we." It's about the "we" getting together. We have to have two votes to get anything done, or three votes to get anything done. And so, my leadership style with the council, I've served multiple members for the last 15 years, we go around the table. Everybody's opinion needs to be heard on our council, and all heard, agreed or disagreed with. And then our job as elected officials is to vote based upon our conscience, and that's how we do it, and it's worked well. Thank you.
All right, Robin Sylvester.
I love this question. I'm honored to be a leader for MINDOT, Department of Transportation. I have about 125 team members on my team. It is not about me, it is about "we" as a team. I'm only as successful as the team that's working with me. We work across the state, 5,400 employees. We make sure we safeguard the taxpayer dollars, safeguard our employees. We minimize risk. We share and we collaborate. There are a number of you probably in this room that are on task force, engagement events. We cannot run a government without "we, the people," and that's how I lead, is I lead with all of us together, and we find the best solution, and then we vote on it. We vote to make the decision, and not everybody's gonna be happy, but you have to make a decision and move on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve Barrows.
Thank you. My leadership style is one to engage people regardless of their opinion or their stand on an issue. I think we see that with some of the individuals that have come before us at board meetings. I take my oath of office to heart. It means everything to me. I follow the Constitution, which is part of the oath. I work with the staff and other experts to understand issues when I may not be the expert in that, and none of us commissioners are experts in everything, but we rely on other people to bring us information so that we can make the best decision possible. To Robin's point, there comes a point where you take a vote, and you have to be prepared to stand behind that vote. You have to be prepared whether you are up on the winning side or on the losing side. You support the vote when it's done. I want to say that because we might disagree on an issue, I never find anybody to be my enemy in that manner. I just feel that we are all trying to do the best that we can do, we just have different understandings of the situation.
All right, thank you. Tad Erickson.
Well, thank you. So whether it's personal life, professional life, or public life, you know, I strive for servant leadership. It's kind of a cliche phrase, but what it means is listening. You know, this, when, in a position, you need to listen to staff, but as an elected leader, you also need to listen to your constituents and the people, and the residents. And so you're gonna be torn in a lot of different directions. You're gonna be hearing a lot of things from different residents, you hear things from experts, from staff, and I think that, you know, experts can bring a lot of information, but they're there to inform decisions and not make decisions. And so, at the end of the day, it comes down to listening to your constituents, weighing all sides, and then it comes down to, you're gonna have to make a judgment call and end up in a decision. And, you know, not everyone's gonna be happy with that decision, but these are grueling positions with some grueling decisions that need to be made, and, like I said, you know, the experts are there to inform your decision, not make the decision.
All right. We'll move on to the next prepared question, then after that, I'm gonna move into audience questions. This goes to Troy Scheffler first. What do you believe is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
Honesty. That is, right there. As far as openness, that's another thing. Being able to stand up for what's right and tell the truth about that, and push, and push, and push, that's certainly on the top of my list. I mean, my competitor didn't even bother answering the League of Women Voters questions, yet they're here. That was kind of disappointing. The sexual harassment issue with Andy Galis, the chief deputy, was ignored for over a year, and I don't have any tolerance for that, and I don't have any patience for it either, but the board did. Another thing that's interesting about telling the truth is the methadone clinic that's in Brainerd right now. Someone sitting at this very table was not honest on record about how that methadone clinic showed up. There was a letter of support that was given for it, and here it is, killing people, along with Baxter residents.
All right, thank you. John, we'll come back to you here. What do you believe is the most significant difference between you and your opponent in this race?
I don't know my opponent very well. She hasn't lived here very long, so I really don't know a lot about her. I know where she's worked, and, but as far as knowing her and knowing her style, I've never seen her be involved in a community area, in any local area, any boards like I've attended and stuff, so I really have a hard time answering that question. All I can tell you is that I have served many boards in this local area. I continue to serve those boards. I enjoy it, I love it, I have full time to devote to it, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Robin?
You know, I am so pleased with my historical profession. I've given, and we've moved for our family. So what I have on my shirt is God, family, and country, and that's number one for me. I've been coming up to this area since 1974. When the pandemic happened, how many of us in this room have relatives that were able to telecommute permanently, where the governor said, "Stand down," to the State Patrol and the Capitol Security, and said, "Go home and don't come back." This was an opportunity that I could come up, my husband's retired, that we could come up and help our father with not only the property, but the business. If John hasn't been around, which he's a super close neighbor since 1974, to get to know the family, my apologies, John. I am proud to be here in Crow Wing County, and I love the beauty, and I've been coming up since I've been very young, and I'd be honored to serve the people here in Crow Wing County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve Barrows.
Well, the difference, first of all, Tad's a very nice person. I've worked with him on some transportation issues through Region 5, but the differences are that I have almost eight years of experience in local government, and am the current incumbent for District 3. I have 28 years of experience with DHS in the last seven years, dealing with a $70 million budget with the Minnesota Sex Offender Program. I don't have any outside interests, any outside jobs that would prevent me from being the full-time commissioner for District 3, which I believe is what they expect and what they should be required of us. We are well-compensated as county commissioners, not to be part-time people commissioners, but to be full-time commissioners. So my experience in the last four years of understanding the responsibility and the scope of this position, I think positions me well to continue for the next four years in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Tad?
Very good. So as I mentioned at the beginning of my opening statements, so I have over a decade's worth of experience in local governments, both on a staff side, but also as an elected official for the City Council of Brainerd. And so I think that perspective gives me a unique perspective, both from the staff side and from the elected leader's standpoint. But as far as differences go, you know, a couple of things that jumped out to me, you know, I watch all the county board meetings, and, you know, I can say for myself that I have an emphatic determination for individual liberties, freedoms, freedom of speech, and less government spending. And so I think those things set me apart. And then lastly, you know, as far as the part-time thing goes, you know, one of the things that I wanted to show with my campaign is that, you know, you can be involved in government, you can get elected, and you don't have to be a retired person to do that. And so I really want to show that with my campaign, that, you know, you can do a lot of different things.
Thank you. And Rosemary?
There is a lot of difference between my opponent and I, and honesty is the thing. I just, I just don't subscribe to the truth, according to Troy, where there is no honesty, in my opinion. You talk about the letter of support. If you, you requested, you had a data request, you got the letter that said, "We did not support the methadone clinic." So here you are, saying that we did. We did not. There was an article in the paper, you can read that. We did not have a letter of support. As far as, you know, the Andy Galis, there was a investigation started immediately, which I cannot talk about because there's data privacy. It just seems to me that everything that is told to you, you twist into something that isn't even accurate, and I am really, really offended by the way you conduct yourself.
No, you don't. It's a forum, so we're not doing a debate. Okay, no, thank you. All right, so we're gonna transition into audience questions at this point, and I have the first one here. This one will go to John Lubke. The lack of mental health services was mentioned during the sheriff's forum. Do you believe that health and human services should be cut or refocused in some way? I'll read it one more time.
Yeah, read it.
The lack of mental health services was mentioned during the sheriff's forum. Do you believe that health and human services should be cut or refocused in some way?
Definitely not cut. I don't know where the situation is at with the opiate from the state yet, but I think that money is coming to the county, if it not has, already has, and that money could be used a lot in order to help that area. Mental health, I think a lot of the mental health that we have in the area is also caused a little bit from what we've been through in the last two or three years. It has caused a lot of people to... It has caused a lot of people to suffer. And I think that mental health needs to be addressed out here. No, I do not think it should be cut at all. And I think we need to ramp it up because it also has a lot of other problems that come down, that the Sheriff's Department has to deal with and the local police have to deal with.
Thank you. Robin, do you get the question?
I got the question. It's okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So I can't speak to if the budget should be increased or decreased. I would be interested in speaking with the subject matter experts to ensure that the right balance of services are being delivered. We're going to run into even a higher demand in the next few years if our economy continues to take the dive. The children need services from being home for two years, from school. When I started at DHS in 2000, when they downsized and eliminated right here all Fergus Falls, Agua Ching, and the Brainerd State Hospitals, yes, it was the right thing to get folks to community services, but we lost beds. And we have to provide services for folks in need, and I don't think we're quite there yet. I also believe that our sheriff's office has a great opportunity to partner with our mental health and have the mental health there on site, on scene, when there's a domestic or there's a need. Because if we don't, we'll be in a higher need later on down the road. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Steve.
First of all, talking about the Health and Human Services budget, if we're talking about the state, that's their job to address that. I think they've gone in the wrong direction when it comes to mental health. We closed a program out here on the campus. Timberland had 96 beds. There's currently in the paper today about an agreement between Fairview and Acadia Healthcare out of Tennessee to create 144 beds down in the cities. They closed, like Robin said, Fergus Falls, Agua Ching, Brainerd. We lost tons of beds that were available back in the time. There is no cheap way out of the mental health problem that we have. You heard the sheriff talk about their staff having to deal with this out there. There's no place for placement. The beds are not there. 144 beds is like spitting on a forest fire when it comes to the mental health issue in our state. So DHS is substantively wrong in how they're addressing the mental health issue at this time. I could go on and on. That was where I got most of my background. 28 years of listening to them justify what they did to our mental health program in the state of Minnesota. I'm out of time. Thank you very much. If you want to talk to me afterwards, I'll be more than happy to give you five hours of dissertation.
All right, Tad. Tad Erickson, I'll repeat that one more time. "Lack of mental health services was mentioned during the sheriff's forum. Do you believe that health and human services should be cut or refocused in some way?"
Thank you, Matt. So this is a huge issue. It's a, to me, it's an all-hands-on-deck community crisis. From my perspective, individuals, families, friends, coworkers, businesses, nonprofits in our communities, we all need to come together to reduce the impact of mental health so that we can reduce the impact of people going into and needing services. Because as you're hearing, there's shortages of beds, the rise of mental health issues is completely on the rise. It's a pandemic of mental health. And, you know, so I think, like I said, we need to reduce on a community level, we need to all take responsibility and help those who we can. Talk to people, talk to your friends, talk to your coworkers, and stem the tide of this mental health crisis. You know, as far as cutting, I mean, the $33 million of the county's budget goes towards community services. And, you know, it's 11% higher than the next highest category within the budget. Is it an issue? Absolutely. Am I saying it needs to be cut? We need to find a way to reduce government spending.
All right, thank you. Rosemarion.
Well, I don't think it should be cut, although I would like to cut every portion of the budget. You know, it's just in my, I'm fiscally conservative, so I would like to cut every place. But mental health issues are out of control right now. COVID seems to have exasperated, you know, people having to stay home, not being able to have the social life, do a lot of the things that we've been able to. So I think I just can't see how we could possibly cut at this point. For that matter, mental health is such an important issue to me that I have been on the Northern Pines Board for many, many years. I now serve as a chair. And to me, it's just, it's something that we have to keep working on.
All right, thank you. Troy.
All right, I really urge everyone to hop on my Facebook page. I got the proof from the county admin talking about the methadone clinic back in 2012, when Rosemary was on the board. The Social Services Department did write a letter of recommendation or support to have it come down after Duluth kicked it out. Multiple people have died. The board has done absolutely nothing. In fact, Rosemary claims that the state is just forcing it on it. I talked to the state a few weeks ago, and they said, "Yes, there's definitely a way to do something." Just last year, a Baxter resident, 78 years old, someone shot up from that methadone clinic and plowed into her. That was a Baxter resident, Rosemary, about your age. So that was a travesty. That was an absolute travesty, and you did nothing about it. An opportunity, the clinic had just changed ownership and within a month. So what's happening is, is this grant dependency that she's been doing has been bringing in all these dependents. So Social Services are absolutely overwhelmed, and we just can't handle it. It's like putting 20 people in a lifeboat that only has a capacity of 10. We all go down with it.
All right, thank you. So we have time for about two more questions here, two more audience questions, and I believe we are now at Robin answering first. "If the state mandates counties provide a service but does not provide funding, what would be your response?"
Well, I would work with my elected officials that represent us and look to push back or look for alternative funding opportunities. Depending on the cycle of state legislature being done in May, and then the county having a budget in December, when does the law need to be enacted? Do we need to act immediately, or do we have time? What is the cost, the fiscal cost, to that law that was enacted? That should have been part of the fiscal note, both from a county perspective, as well as a state rep perspective and an agency perspective. There's a lot of entanglement there. There's a lot of opportunity to weed through what that might look like, but gotta work with folks. We all gotta try to solve the problem that we need to fix because we're being mandated to do something. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Steve.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought up unfunded mandates, because when we talk about community services, we talk about health and human services at the state level. Those unfunded mandates are what come down to us, and we have no choice but to put it on your levy. That's, we're forced to do that by law. My position is that we should all work together to address the federal level of government and the state level of government, to make any legislation that they pass that has a financial component to it, that they have to find the dollars to fund it. Because at the county level, the city level, and the township level, we have to find the money to do what we pass or are forced to pass, do those unfunded mandates. This is not a fun job when you look at somebody telling you that you have to spend your taxpayers' dollars, and they can go back and tell you how they feel about that when they're the ones responsible for passing that piece of legislation. So let's work together to change that system. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tad.
So regarding the unfunded mandates, you know, at some point, there's only, you know, you can only ask so much of your residents. So at some point, I think you need to do, you need to push back against the state legislature and the federal government, you know, and if we could only make the federal government stop, you know, passing legislation requiring us to do things and stop spending money, you know, that's not going to happen in the near future. You know, we need to find innovative local solutions, because it's not going to happen at the federal or state level. We can't wait for that. So we need to find local solutions. We need, you know, if we can partner with nonprofits and find local solutions to these issues, then we're going to have to do it.
All right, thank you. Rosemarion.
Okay, I, unfunded mandates are something that really irritate me because I don't want someone to tell us that we have to do something and then we have to charge you. That's not right. You know, it is up to our community services directors to make sure that we know about all the unfunded mandates and about all of the letters that they write and everything else. And when they don't, there's a problem. And this thing fell off, so you probably can't hear me.
Just hold it up if you need to.
Okay. Okay, but anyway, I think it should be a requisite that if someone mandates us to do something, that they have to pay for it.
All right, thank you. Troy Scheffler.
Well, the state does have laws on mandating certain programs be footed by the county, but here it is. Here I am, a broken record once again, because it's been a broken record for 16 years of my opponent's incumbency. The problem is, and I just explained the percentages of what's going on, is that they got absolutely obsessed in taking grants to offset the budget during her little eight-year no-levy increase, but there's a bunch of shell games like overdevelopment, sales tax implementation, and kicking the can down the road. Now we're paying for it. And what's really bizarre about that is that you bring, you welcome them in, knowing damn well that you have to support them when you welcome them in with these grants that you're taking, like the $340,000 grant that she seconded the motion for, to help import people into Crow Wing County and find them low-income housing, when we have no low-income housing. And these guys are really struggling, the actual working poor.
All right, thank you. John, I'll repeat the question just one more time. If the state mandates counties provide a service but does not provide funding, what would be your response?
We've dealt with that even in our little city of Jenkins, because the state mandated we change all of our signs because of the reflectivity on it. And our little city of Jenkins could not afford that, so we just said, "We're going to change the signs when we can." And they haven't caught us yet. But when it comes to the county, and the county has to provide those services and health and wellness for people and children, and have to provide it by the state, and it involves people, yes, it has to be paid. It has to be done. I lobby with the League of Minnesota Cities, which I serve on their Board of Directors, and lobby for that, because that is something in a lot of cities we face all the time. And until we can get our legislators to understand that if you're going to pass something, figure a way of funding it, because that's where we run into a lot of trouble, and we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robin.
That started, I'm like, do I get a redo? Because I could use that. I'm teasing.
So that's twice on the moderator, and I apologize. All right, so we have one more question remaining, and then we're going to move to closing statements. So I believe this will go to Tad first. It'll go to Steve first. "What are your priorities for managing or improving county parks, trails, and natural resources?"
Good question, and I want to acknowledge that when I came on board, what I wanted to see our county parks look like, I want them to look the same all the time, and that we, so that creates a brand for Crow Wing County. So when somebody's in that park, they know that they're in a Crow Wing County-administered park. And I think that is important for Crow Wing County to separate itself from other counties. We have one of the most beautiful counties in the state of Minnesota, and it's important that we share that with people and that the structures that we build and that are of a quality that speaks to that. And I will continually talk about and push for making our parks the best that they can be, the Fire Tower, the Milford Mine. Commissioner Coring has one down on the South Long Lake Park that he loves down there. We aren't going to get crazy with it, but we are going to develop parks where appropriate and make them quality parks so people can enjoy Crow Wing County. Come here, spend their money. Thank you.
Thank you, Tad.
Well, yeah, there's no doubt that we live in a jewel of the state, and it's an area that people love to come and live and play and recreate. And so, you know, what I would want to do is prioritize our parks for all users and, again, maximize that economic value that we have. So not only for those who want to come up and use our waterways, but also for our bikers, our pedestrians, snowmobilers, ATVs. And I think we need to, you know, really cast a wide net, you know, because we already are a destination. I think people are already coming to this area, and so I think we need to, you know, not pick and choose those who, you know, we want to have recreate and come to our area, but we need to open that up and promote it to all users, so.
All right, thank you. I'll repeat the question for you, Rosemary. "What are your priorities for managing or improving county parks, trails, and natural resources?"
Well, I think parks and trails are a requirement. Everybody wants to be here. We have to have places for them to recreate. And I think that we need to make sure that we have all kinds of opportunities. We need to have ATV, we need to have the bike park, we need to have ski trails, ATV. And I've been part of helping many of those parks. Milford Mine was not developed when I was there. The Fire Tower was not. We developed the Southern Loop and Miller Black Bear for ATVs. People want to recreate in this area, and I want to make it possible for them to come here and spend their money.
All right, thank you. Troy.
Well, it's kind of one of those overly broad questions where it kind of depends on what area, what is it about, what park, what's the use, is the community down with it? So it's almost impossible to really give a specific answer to it. But, I mean, it's unarguable that a lot of people come up here for recreation. I mean, that's the way it is. I guess the one thing in the shell game that it was somewhat okay to fund the highways, and this is kind of getting a little off-topic, but I'd like to give kudos when kudos are due, even though it was a shell game, is the people that come up here to recreate, a lot of times, they're taking advantage of free recreation for them, and we paid for it. So say, for example, road usage. The sales tax that was actually implemented was a good thing to actually get people coming from outside the county to pick up a little bit of the road tab that they've been using, rather than laying it off entirely on property taxes.
All right, thank you. John.
Question again, please.
"What are your priorities for managing or improving county parks, trails, and natural resources?"
I've been able to enjoy these parks and recreational areas in Crow Wing County. I think it is part of community of what a county needs to support. I know in the one that's kind of personal to me is the Fire Tower up in Pequot Lakes. If it wouldn't have been the county stepping in there and helping to get that Fire Tower made into a landmark and do that, it was, it's a place for my, my kids have been up there, my family members, we make a mecca to the Fire Tower. It's a cool thing. It is part of being a county, and especially a county with all the gifts that God has granted us in this county, all the beautiful resources and stuff we have. We need to be good stewards of it. And I think by the county being involved and doing those things that they've done have shown that, have shown a leadership in that area, and I applaud them. I know we don't have enough money to do everything we'd like to do, but we got to keep the beauty that we have in this area going. Thank you.
Robin, if my calculations are correct, you haven't answered this question.
I think I'm good to go. Thank you. This is the heart of Minnesota. The land, the beauty, is the heart of Minnesota. We need to keep it that way. As this county continues to grow with population, I likened it to Florida, Arizona, and Texas. We're going to have more usage out of those beautiful lakes and our trails. We have to invest in them in a balanced way with a balanced growth of this beautiful community. What that looks like for me is bringing the right people together in the areas that is being built or being considered. Let's get stakeholder and groups being innovative on what is new and what do we grow right here at home. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to transition now onto the closing statements. These are 30 seconds and I would just warn you that these 30 seconds are going to go fast. But this is your closing statement. The first person up would be Tad Erickson.
Someone once told me, and I agree with them, that, you know, the average person, they're going to interact with a lot of different units of government, but the one that they're going to interact most with is the county level. And so I think that's both appropriate because I think that the will of the people is best translated into policy, public policy at the county level. And so I'm committed to accurately translating the will of the people into public policy at the county level. And again, my background in local government, my time on the Brainerd City Council, I think has prepared me with the judgment and the skills that I'll need to be the next Crow Wing County Commissioner for District Three.
All right. Thank you. Rosemary Franzen.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight, but I also want to thank you for allowing me to serve as your county commissioner. I'm humbly asking the good residents of District Four for their vote to reelect me. I look forward to continuing my efforts towards positive change and forward progress at the county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Troy Scheffler.
All right. Well, if I get elected as commissioner, the work isn't done by a vote. I'm going to expect everyone here to keep my number, keep my Facebook page, stay on my Facebook page, check out my Facebook page and verify what's been said today. What's really important to me with saying that is I want you guys to hold me accountable. Tell me what's going on in the community because if I'm elected post-November, well, when I am, I'm working for you guys.
Thank you. John Lubke.
Yes.
Your closing statement, sir.
I thought maybe you were going to have a question or maybe we had to worry about somebody else doing this. I've lived, I've lived here for 49 years and like you can hear, I love this place I live. I've been experienced in owning my own business, experienced in serving as the mayor of the city of Jenkins for the last 15 years, also serving on many boards that involve people, environment. I've served on the One Watershed One Plan Board. I have the vision. I love it. I love to collaborate with other people. I like dialogue. I believe that this is the place to be and I believe I can do and serve my people well in District Two in Crow Wing County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Robin Sylvester.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for being here again tonight. I am done hearing, we want to, we're going to do it this way because we've always done it that way. State government, local government has a bad rap, has a bad reputation. And I don't believe that's, you know, everyone, but I want to make folks realize that coming to the table, they can change it. And I, as a leader at the state right now, know I can transition to the county government and be a voice for we, the people, and I would be honored. So thank you so much.
All right. And then finally, Steve Barrows.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I want to thank my wife for being here. She's not a real campaign person, but she supports me in my efforts. I just want to ask the voters of District Three to please consider me as your next commissioner. I have had the pleasure of doing these three plus years and I'm looking forward to being able to put some of the initiatives that I have in my head into a plan and then ultimately fruition for the district in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes tonight's forum. Let's give one more round of applause to the candidates. You can find more candidate and voting information out in the hallway. Remember to vote. Election day is Tuesday, November 8th, and early voting begins next Friday, September 23rd. Go to vote411.org. Thanks for being here, everybody.